Board of Trustees regular meeting Monday, August 4, 2014, 7:30 to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Action of agenda. Any additions or deletions, please?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Spark. Motion by Turk Keyes, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any questions, caution, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments. Brown.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak tonight on behalf of Congresswoman Candace Miller. Just wanted to come out and say hello again, and most of you know me through the years. I've been out on these parts before looking after county business. And Congressman Miller wanted me to extend her greetings to all of you and to just give you an update of where she's been and what she's been up to. Just a little background, Congressman Miller is one of 435 members of Congress, and each congressional district has 710,000 representatives, roughly. And her district covers six counties, the northern part of Macomb County here, San Clair County, Lapeer County, San Laak County, Huron County, the tip of the thumb, and Tuscola, three-quarters of Tuscola County. So she's really got the thumb of Michigan when you want to describe her district. It's a very district, probably more heavily agged in terms of area, but we do a lot of industry, obviously, down here in Macomb County and in San Clair County. It's a varied district, so there's a variety of issues that come before us. Congressman Miller is Chairwoman of the House Administration Committee. Sometimes that person is called the Mayor of the Capitol because that House Administration Committee deals with the day-to-day operations of running the House. You know, from security, much like the township, you've got a responsibility to run your community. They've got a community on the Capitol that they have to manage and maintain, primarily from contracts and supplies and all of those type of things. And so she's running that as a Chairwoman. She's also Vice Chair of the Homeland Security Committee, and that deals with all the things that come with that title, Homeland Security, making sure our country and our borders are secure. She's Chairwoman of the Border and Maritime Subcommittee that deals with the issues specifically out of the Homeland Security Committee, deal with our borders, like our Canadian border right here in Michigan, as well as a southern border and all of our ports of entry, and trying to make sure that our country is able to have borders that are fluid enough to allow good commerce to come through with our partners, but as well as making sure that we keep the undeservables out that are possibly threatening our country, such as terrorists and other things. She's also a member of the Transportation Infrastructure Committee, the only member of the Michigan Congressional delegation in the House that's on the Transportation Infrastructure Committee. They just passed before they left an extension of the Highway Bill, which is the federal jobs road bill and so forth that they passed. So that's going to continue on. There was some concern that it wouldn't get passed, but the Senate and the House worked together to pass a bipartisan piece of legislation to move that forward. It'll keep the construction project in our state and in our, in the whole country for that matter, moving along without any interruption. Her offices are available to support you and to be working with all of you, whether it's your view as a community, as a township board, trying to work on projects for the good of the community, as well as individual residents. She has two offices, one in Washington DC and one here in the district in Shelby Township. Shelby Township office is probably the best point of contact for all of you because that's where most of the casework gets done, whether it's an individual issue with maybe a veteran's benefit or social security issue you might be having for you or your parents, or anything else that comes before you. I work out of the Shelby Township office, and we have field reps that go out and cover the district, as well as that new casework there. And so any involved with government, federal government, you want to contact our office, we can be a liaison. We're not maybe able to help you directly, but we may be able to help you navigate through the system and be that grease that maybe helps you get something going, gets that done for you. We also have, Congressman Miller is very proactive every day. She wants to know who's calling her opposite for what subject because she cares very much about her job as a representative of the district. And so one of those ways she keeps her ear on the district is how many calls are coming in and what they're about. You know, one day maybe you'll have random calls with casework, a few calls about border security, a few more calls about something going on in foreign policy or the issue of the day. And so she keeps tracking, wants to know what those numbers are. It gives her a flavor for what the temperature of the district is. So she's paying attention, but that's not always the best way to do it because not everyone calls. She has an e-newsletter that she puts out, or on her website, actually, is the best point of contact. It got on her availability of all of her current press releases and things that she's doing in Washington, as well as an opportunity for you to sign up for her e-newsletter. And there you'll be able to get direct, up-to-date information from that shit that's going on in the Capitol that she's involved in, right through your desktop. It gives you the ability to communicate back to her on issues you think are important. If there's something going on in the news that concerns you, say, you just have an opinion you want to express, you can do that. Or if you've got a case or something issued that you need help with personally, you can use that same email and communicate it to us, and that message gets out to the right people, and we can get back to you and help you. So we're interested in trying to help and want to be your liaison, the federal government. Consider us a resource to your board as something as you're trying to work and scrap with challenges and all of us in government, except for the federal government, are dealing with, you know, issues with revenue and how to deal with Washington right now is tight for money, as well as you here at the local level. So consider us as an entity, try to work with you to try to help those projects that you're trying to work on. Congressman Miller, right now in the House, is working through their budget process, as maybe perhaps you or many other local governments in the state. They've passed, there are 12 appropriation bills that fund government, such as defense, transportation, other things. They're through seven of those 12 appropriation bills right now, and they're working through the remainder as they go through the year. Part of those defense, one part of those budget issues was the defense budget. And there was an issue that we all know very well in this county about Selfridge Air Force Base, Air National Guard base, and the A-10s that were stationed there, or are stationed there, will continue. Candace Miller made an amendment to the budget that would keep those A-10s funded for another year, not have them decommissioned, as some of the administrations suggested. And that bill was adopted in the House and is awaiting action in the Senate in their budget deliberations. And hopefully that, that they adopt that recommendation from the House. We've got strong allies there with Senator Levin and Senator Stabenow, and we're pretty optimistic that that too will come through the Senate, and we'll be able to keep those A-10s stationed at Selfridge for another year, provide the important defense mission they provide for our ground forces, a total replacement can be built. Right now, there isn't one to replace the job that they do for our ground troops. And that will also mean that those jobs will be protected at Selfridge, not only the pilots, but the mechanics and the support services are there. Another thing that she's been working on, there's been some very much concerns about the VA and some of the delays in getting service to our veterans. Obviously Congressman Miller obviously cares very much about our veterans and being married to a veteran herself, her husband Don being a former Vietnam-era Air Force pilot and the base commander at Selfridge. The House just passed recently the fix for the Veterans Healthcare, which is going to allow, that would allow veterans who cannot get an appointment within 30 days or who live more than 40 miles away from a VA medical facility to receive care at a non-VA facility. That means giving them options, card, to go to their local physician perhaps nearby if they're too far away from a VA clinic. So there's no reason why they can't get the care they need in a timely fashion through the VA. So then there are myriad of other issues that are going on, but the main purpose I was here again is just to say hello to you friends that I know for some time, and then to those you do not, let us know that Candace Miller's office is available to you and my office as well out of there. I left on the table back there when you leave her constituent contact cards. And that, and this is basically a little map of the district, as well as some of the services that she's able to provide through our office, as well as contact information, probably the most important thing. Her email address, candacemiller.house.gov, as well as the phone numbers and mailing addresses, not only in Washington office, but here in the district office as well. And people sometimes say, well, where should I call if I got a political issue or I'm really concerned about something going on in Washington today? You don't have to call the DC number, you can call long distance. You can call us locally at the district office. She gets those messages just the same as she gets in the DC, and it'll save you a little long-distance phone call. Of course, we always like to take your mail as well or email, but either way, we want to hear from you and be accessible to you and because Congressman really fully believes that, you know, she works for you, the taxpayers who sent her there, and it's an honor, she doesn't take lightly, and she tries to uphold every day. So I'll conclude there and be available to you as needed. Thank you very much to the supervisor and the members of the board and the members of the audience. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Any other public comment?
Mickey Louderman Frostrood. I just wanted to say hats off once again to our fire department, all the men that were there and worked so hard, went out, beautiful gifts, a great meal. There was lots to eat. If anybody went home hungry, shame on them. And a board member and myself can speak of the great prizes that they had this year. I don't know how they knew it, really. It was very, very nice. I hope next year to see that thing double. I don't know if Denny does, but it's a lot of work for them. But every one of them, every one of the firemen that were there that I spoke to, some that I don't even really know, were cordial, friendly. It was a great time. Hats off to you guys once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Approval of minutes. 62, 65, 616, 716, 2014.
I read through them all, and if anybody has any changes, let me know. But otherwise, I approve the minutes as printed for 62, 65, 616, 716, 2014.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Sheriff's report. I do not have the up-to-date sheriff's report. They're still lagging behind. And actually, we plan on having another discussion regarding that, if we're going to just do them quarterly, or because they have such a problem getting them out with the statistics. So just to let everybody know. Fire Department report, Chief.
Thank you, just a couple items. First request that you receive and file my month-end report, month-end. Run statistics, please. Item number two to follow up with Mickey. First off, thank you, Mickey. Thanks for the board, for all five of you making it this year. I know vacations and Karen's fundraiser usually always, there's always, and a family reunion is usually, and you all made it this year, which meant a lot to the guys, 25th anniversary this year of the department. So we had a great turnout. Thanks to anybody that here in the audience that made it. It went extremely well. And we won't know our numbers for probably a week or so, but it went really well. So thanks again. I do have one item that I just wanted to bring up to you. Received contact from Chief Ross. Chief Ross is the fire chief at Selfridge, at Selfridge Fire Department. And every two years, they hold the airshow there. And two years ago, we had this discussion because the board was unaware that our fire department, on a regular basis, goes out there. They request additional personnel from surrounding fire departments because they have over 100,000 people show up for the airshow, and it's something that their 30 personnel can't handle. And the last two times that we were there, our personnel actually were put into service. Two years ago, we had the gentleman fall off the plane, and two years prior to that, we had a fire that our crew was first to, first to end to respond to. So Chief Ross has requested our assistance. I didn't, when I did the budget this year, I didn't assume anything, but I made sure that there was going to be money to cover this. When you look at the totality of the budget, it's a small, small item. If we were to send four personnel for 10 hours on each day, okay? That's what they're requesting. And I haven't had anybody step up yet. I told them I want to, the total cost would be $1,380 out of my budget. So it's not a big thing. So I told our personnel that if I couldn't get more approval, I'd still allow you to go. You'd be covered under work with comp, I just couldn't pay you for the hours. But this is a really big deal, and a fire department is asking for help. And I'd really like to send our people there and be able to compensate them accordingly. So I'm asking the board to approve the compensation for them, for any personnel with a maximum of four per day to go.
Is Selfridge still on the mutual aid card?
Yes.
Will they come here if needed?
If we had something, absolutely. They're third, fourth alarm in our community, plus they're part of the water tender task force, which we have now in Macomb County. So, yes.
I make a motion to approve the expenditure of $1,380 to allow our fire department to assist Selfridge for the airshow.
Aye.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Chief. EMS report.
Good evening. Just a few items from the EMS for the board. I'm real pleased to report that the EMS applied this year again for, through what's called the Assistance for Firefighters grant, but they do let publicly-owned emergency medical services apply for that grant. We've applied for the last couple of years to put a diesel exhaust removal system in our station number one. It's the only building that doesn't have that system at this point in time. We were, we did receive word on Friday that we received that grant in the amount of $20,250. The grant was actually put together this time by Jason Phillips. Jason's kind of new to our management team. He has some experience writing some durets in the past. He's a member of the Memphis Volunteer Fire Department, had some luck there with his grant-writing skills, so kind of tasked him with that. He's also responsible for all of our facilities maintenance, all three stations. Everything kind of goes on to those from a facility standpoint. So he did a great job on it. Like I say, we'll be going through the process of actually accepting the award with the federal government. There's a process that goes through for accepting it, and then we'll actually be going out to get busy on the actual work. So kudos to Jason, and more information to follow on that. I want to take a minute just to mention that, just to remind the public that tomorrow, we do have a primary election. I'm sure the clerk will remind them of that at the end of the meeting. But this election, for the first time, has some effect on our local EMS through the Community Transit Service we run. As you know, we operate the small bus service here in northern Macomb County to get our seniors and disabled to medical treatment appointments. Last year, we moved about 20,000 people on those buses. So there is a lot of people that use them, and it makes me cringe once in a while when people say buses are empty. I can't speak to the buses down in southern Macomb County, but I can tell you that we usually don't have a vacant seat on our buses here in Lenox Township. It was informed this afternoon by the folks at SMART that should the village fail tomorrow night, this isn't Jeff White speaking, this was a call that I got from Fred Barbret, our ombudsman, we should start to wind down service operations on Wednesday morning. We will have hours, literally, after the election should it fail to start decreasing service levels significantly. We don't know if there'll be a part of it that will be able to stay operational or not. That's yet to be seen. But they said, there was a couple routes they said immediately eliminate on that. So, you know, this is the way SMART chose to operate this election. And we don't have any control over that at the EMS. The community receives dollars from SMART. We take those and spend them on providing the service. So don't kill the messenger, is what I'm, is what I'm here to tell the folks. But they do need to know that, like I say, that service would begin to wind down, like I say, at 8 o'clock on Wednesday morning, should the village fail on Tuesday. One other item that will be in this week's paper, and I just wanted to make sure that, I know I sent the board a written update, but I wanted to reassure, I guess, the board on this issue and make sure they didn't have any particular questions for the EMS on it. As you all know, but for the sake of the public, Richmond-Lenox EMS is owned by Richmond and Lenox Township. Richmond Township, much like Lenox, has operated a senior program for a number of years with varying degrees of success. A lot of the reason they've had some varying degrees of success is they only operated a couple of hours one day a week. It's hard to find an employee to operate something a couple of hours one day a week. And so the EMS worked with Richmond Township, and actually, we have administratively taken on the responsibilities of the senior program. We're taking one of our office people who has some additional time to actually go up there and operate the senior program on Mondays from 1 until 3 o'clock in the afternoon. The big message for Lenox is, one, we do have some Lenox residents who actually attend up there, and I know Lenox has some Richmond residents who attend here, so the seniors kind of do make the rounds. But the other issue is Richmond Township is paying independently of any EMS funds for this service. So when it comes on the newspaper, I don't want somebody saying, well, geez, are those EMS funds being used for, you know, operating the senior program? And the answer is absolutely not. Actually, Richmond Township is paying us a little more than what it costs so that we have a little more administrative time for this person that's in our office during the week. So actually, you know, we can't make money, but actually, we're getting a little more money than what it costs to actually operate the service, and they're paying that to us separately from the EMS dollars. So when you see that, that's what's going on. I believe there's going to be an article in Wednesday's paper. It was already in the online edition. So I wanted to bring that to the board's attention this evening, so you know what's going on. With that, the last bit of sad news for folks that may have known her through her time at Security Bank in Richmond, or who have known her through her marriage to our past township supervisor up in Richmond Township, Pat McKernan, Jean-Pat McKernan, passed away last evening. She had been suffering a long time from illness, and in fact, the family had hoped to have started arranging hospice early this week. So it was kind of expected, kind of passing. I did send along to the board if, so they would be aware the funeral arrangements for Mrs. McKernan. Pat and Jim have always kind of held a special place in my heart. Jim McKernan actually hired me here at the EMS in 1989. So just wanted to report out to the board so that they were aware. Thank you so very much. Unless there are any questions, I have one other item, but it's down on the regular agenda.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. White. Thank you. EPW report.
Good evening. Everybody should have received my month-end report. There's only one item that I'd like to touch on. Everything else I would request they receive and file. The one, the one thing that I would like to touch on is number one, something that we've strived long and hard to try and get accomplished. Wesley, our full-time employee at Public Works, I did receive notification last month that he did pass his S4.
Very good.
So he's on the road to get to where he needs to. This is like a stepping stone certification. So he needs to continue to work to get to his S3 and any further if he so desires. But congratulations, Wesley, for passing his S4.
Absolutely.
Other than that, you can see it's normal, routine things that we're working on. We're working on a lot of updating on different schedules and reports. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions? All set. All right, thank you. Thank you. Co-enforcement reporter.
I have the liquor control inspection forms for both June and July. And actually, it's July and August. He did the last one late June.
Any other questions? Assessing Department report. Any questions? Engineers report.
No questions, received file, please.
Thank you, Mr. Safe. Questions for Mr. Safe. Library report. Let us read their statement real quick. This year's summer reading theme, Fizz Boom Read, has been a major success for Lenox Township library patrons. Adult children readers have enjoyed the theme-based programs. Camel-making for teens and adults will be whole Thursday, August 6, starting at 4. Movies and munchies will feature Rio 2 on Monday, August 11, at 5:30. Everybody's welcome to come to the library and learn about simple machines on Thursday, August 14. A presentation for children, 3 to 5, will be at 4 p.m., and children 6 and up will be at 5 p.m. This year, the library will conclude its summer reading program with summer reading blowout sponsored by Friends of the Library. Our blowout will include mom-to-mom sale, book sale, and the exotic zoo. Javon Stacks and his animals will be in the library on Saturday, August 16, at 1 p.m. Thank you. Any questions? Senior Center report.
I have nothing, I think I have two questions, so just receive and file, please.
Thank you. Supervisors report. I would like to report after last month's meeting, or our last special meeting, I should say, we had an event in the township. I do have copies of all the police reports that were made for Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday night. We went out on co-enforcement all three nights, one stop at approximately 9:30 and one stop at approximately 11:30, which one did run over due to an accident that the deputies could not respond to. It ended up being about 12:30. And this was regarding noise levels in our community with these music festivals. I can tell you, standing with our noise ordinance at 65 decibels at the property line, standing on grassit when a car comes by, the decimal reader jumps to about 74 decibels. When we did a triangulation test at each of his farthest boundaries and one at the midpoint of his boundaries, he averaged high 50s. We had decimal readings as low as 41. Highest, I believe, was 58 to 59. I had five different deputies that verified every sound measurement we took. We stayed there for a little while, too, to make sure we weren't just getting flip ones, and we did that triangulation test, we just didn't take it from one spot. We went farthest boundary, quarter mile down 28, midpoint in front of the schoolhouse, and then quarter mile up grassit. And like I said, those were twice a night, Friday, Saturday, and even Sunday. If anybody would like to see these reports, I have them. I'll be happy to let you look at them. Thank you. Treasurers report. Motion to accept the treasurer's report as presented.
No support, we need to include that was May 14.
Oh, for May 14. Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Orders of bills.
The actual bills that are being paid tomorrow, the total is $272, $282, and .54. I adjusted the amount for the senior center. That was for the bills, the amount that's on the bills list was the amount that she'd actually spent, and we actually are giving her $750 a quarter, so I add that to the $750 to cover that. And one other bill came in late, I forget now which one it was. So that was in it. So the new amount is $272, $282, .54.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills at a total of $272,282.54.
Support. Motion by trustee Turchi, supported by trustee Boyd. Other question? Deputy clerk, roll call, please.
Turchi?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Attenbacher?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Traumler?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Trustees report. Trustee Turchi, please.
I'd just like to reiterate that, yeah, the stakeout was a great time, great food and everything. Also, for most of you that have known me for a long time, last week was my endurance ride on a jet ski. I work raising money for Special Olympics of Michigan all year, and I go with the Water Warriors up to Mackinac City, and we make our way down 350 miles on jet skis. It was awesome. By Friday, I think our totals were up to about $100,000. We're trying to hit like 150. So, anybody wants to donate to Special Olympics, see me. It was great, a lot of camaraderie. And if anybody ever wants to be involved, just contact me. It can be land, boat, or on a jet ski. So, at the planning commission level, we're still working on ordinances, so that's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Boyd.
The only thing I have is very happy to say that we applied for a grant for park improvements, and we are into the second phase. The pre-award site visit happened a week ago or so. Cam was there and Jeanette, and actually, the lady that came out and looked at the park was, she was very impressed with the upkeep of the park. She said it was very nice, and it looks very qualified for what we're looking for. So, we're on to stage two of that, so very happy about that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Clerk reporter.
I just wanted to touch on, as Jeff White said, there is a primary election tomorrow. The polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We are also getting ready for the end-of-year audit, so that's ongoing. The computer conversion is ongoing. There's been some snags along the way, but actually, it was nothing I didn't expect to happen. Technology is a wonderful thing when it works the way it's supposed to, and you can never anticipate everything that's going to happen. So, we are moving forward. The biggest that is being worked on right now is our fax machine, and there's a temporary fix going to happen, and there's probably some upgrading to do on equipment for it to work correctly. Microsoft that we went to has a lot more security involved, and that's where most of these Snap moves have come in. It's more secure than our old system was, so we'll move forward.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to receive and file our reports.
Support.
Motion by trustee Turchi, supported by treasurer Attenbacher. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Unfinished business. A township building window cleaning request. Basically, definitely, ultimately, this boils down to three quotes. One still has not gotten back to you after numerous requests.
What, the fourth company?
And they're all over the board. They're extremely different, all three of them. I don't have a lot of confidence in them because they are so far apart each one of them, so it's pick your poison with this scenario here. Time of year, summer's almost over. We're going to be going into fall months again, but they're all over the board.
The one that is the least amount of money, I contacted them last week, and they apparently did not get my email. So, I talked to the owner this morning, or this afternoon, and the price he has in there is including all windows. They had told me that he had some concerns about some of the taller ones, the higher ones, but he included those in this price.
Yeah, just so everybody knows, we have one at $13.50, one at $2,332, and then one at $3,050 for the same job, for doing all the windows.
Right. The company that does our normal office cleaning, I said in June that they did not do the upper level windows. Well, that is what she told me when I was talking to her about something else and mentioned that, the quote that they had given us for June, she says, "Oh, no, we can do the upper windows." So, she redid her quote, and I got it last week. So, that's why those are included now.
What they're saying on their rental for lift is not needed? How do they figure they're going to get?
For the exterior windows, the outside. They can do it from the ground the same way.
I just have a hard time believing that you can do those windows from the ground.
That's what the one quote for $3,050, but they also don't need a lift. They do everything with a pole. They can reach.
How high is that?
Where at, highest point?
50?
40.
With a pole, what do you think?
Well...
I hope you had a lot of practice.
Which one is $3,050? I don't have that. I have $2,750. I was asking how they did one of this one. Okay, so there's one problem.
And I did check on some kind of Rain-X or something like that to put on the windows, and the one company said it is a really hard process, and it is a very, very expensive process, so they don't even recommend it.
At this point in time, like Ron said, these are all over the board, and it is, you know, we are now into August. We're into rainy season. Why don't we wait until closer to spring, get quotes again? I would still like to see the, in its name, Rain-X, I see they called it something else, even if it was just done on a few windows to see.
And I agree with just the waiting, because I think there's some other things that we might be able to package together with this. We have some other maintenance issues with some painting that we haven't tackled yet, interior with the steel cam, that we might be able to, if we have to get a piece of equipment in, we could maybe incorporate this all together and save us some money.
At this point, I'd just like to wait because, like I said, it's rainy season, so, you know.
I agree with that statement.
If we started... Next week, and they're going to look like they do right now. I'd also like to try, even if we just did a couple of windows with the invisible shield.
Right.
And maybe we can show them something.
Okay.
I don't know, that's just, I'd like to, I'd like to take, remove this from the agenda until...
And even if we were going to hire a guy to do it from the ground, I'd like to see him do one test window before we pay them money to...
Right. That's what I'm saying, just do a couple of windows so that we can look at it and say, "Wow, that really worked," or, you know, "That's not worth it."
Yeah. I just have a hard time from 40 to 50 feet up in the air on the ground that they're going to get it clean.
Well, they said they can't, they wouldn't be able to do the higher ones with the stuff anyway, but if, if half of those, if it worked, if half of those front ones were done, it would make a big difference.
Yeah.
If it worked. I'd like to make a motion to remove this from the agenda, looking at again in the March
Motion by clerk Keith, supported by trustee Boyd. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business, Cintas, match for township buildings. Gentlemen?
How are you? Do you want me to...
Please.
Okay, the two gentlemen that are standing up there are Andy Bowman and Rick Topley. Is that right? Okay. As everybody, anybody that was here in, I believe it was our June meeting, we were looking into the possibility of getting rugs from a source and doing what they've been doing for us for years on our home, see what the price would be to have the rugs taken care of here. In doing so, we found a few little pickups that was going on. Cintas, they are representatives from Cintas, and we've used them from the time we were over in the other building, and they did it, I think, twice a month. We started every other week.
You guys have been once a month for a long period of time.
Now, and then we went to once a month. We moved over here in May of 2008, and I guess we discovered that we didn't have all the rugs here. We thought that one of them had been, it wasn't going to work out right here, and the gal that was bringing them had been told to take it back. Well, apparently, she thought we meant to take it back, I guess, to the building because it ended up in the old building and had not been removed in the six years. And then we also, when we were looking into this, found out that we were in a, if you want to call it contract slash agreement with Cintas. And so, long story short, like Jeff said before, I even knew it was happening in the paper that week. I was, and, you know, these fellows came to see me on a Monday. It had been, apparently, they'd read it online, or article that had been talked about in the paper, and they're trying to set something up with us. They realized that, you know, on both parts here, we were amiss because we didn't realize we were paying for three rugs to be cleaned, and we are indeed just getting two rugs, and the people on the other end, miscommunication on both ends. Long story short, these guys came, talked to me, and they'd like to, they'd like to resolve this issue as best we can. They did send me, and I gave you all a copy of the email from Andy. They'd like to give us a $500 credit for the missing scraper mat. So, any questions that you guys have?
What's your, I just have one, what's your recommendation?
Well, my only question, I think $500 credit is very good. I appreciate that, but my question is, what, because we are tied into, as I understand, a contract with you until 2016, is it? So, what if we decided as a board that they don't want to continue the service, what would we do there? How do we, are we still going to be charged a fee to get out of that?
We can work that out, we can work that out with you. If you wanted to just stop it and break, we'd like to say it's an agreement that we're doing business in good faith. If we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, you know, if we, if we made a mistake and we can't resolve it, then you could break that agreement. But once again, it's an agreement that we're doing business in good faith, just like that offer was in good faith. So, we'd like to continue service with you, obviously. We have a bunch of people that live in this township, and all the areas that you spoke of that work with Cintas, we're in this, this, you know, your area. So, bottom line is, there's no, there's no strong army here, but we'd like to continue business with you in any manner, shape, or form. I heard you talk about carpeting. We do that. I heard you talk about, you know, all kinds of other services. We'd like to offer that, anything that we have and can and will do for you from a service standpoint. So, if you truly don't want the mats, which I think they, personally, I think you're opening yourself up first.
Well, yeah.
So, service flaws, you know, we can look that up.
And when the gentlemen were in my office, they were talking, I mentioned, I asked if they were, you know, saying, because we have the shredding company that is also Cintas. We also have the fire department. They check the...
First aid.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. They have our fire extinguisher certifications as well as our fire alarm system.
Okay. So, we do use, you know, we do use them, you know. So, my only question was, what does the board feel? You know, do they, and right now, I'm not sure either, when you start looking into the cost of the rugs and that, if, again, who's going to maintain them if we did buy them?
And maintain them properly.
Right.
Especially going into the winter and season.
That's, that's why we exist. That's the whole, that's always what we exist, is to maintain those, and maintaining them properly is what we do best. This was a misunderstanding that got blown out, of course, you've asked me, but I want to make it go away, and I don't want ill will to be between you and us, so that doesn't do us any good.
Well, the $500 is very close to what the total comes that we were charged for that mat that wasn't there, so I, personally, I agree with Karen, she's very generous. I think you guys stepped up for that, you know, stepped right up and took care of that. As far as us continuing on with them, I agree that, you know, Karen and I, we talked about it earlier, if we went out and watered on mats, who's going to maintain them, who's going to maintain them correctly, who's going to clean them? I just don't know that it would be worth doing that. Do we need to do, make that decision tonight, or can we make the decision on the $500 and be done with that, and then look into the mats and make that decision later?
Well, we have a contract with them, we're, we're still in contract with them, correct?
Right.
So, $500 is what's at issue right now. I'm Josh. Attorney Joppick.
What I was going to indicate, and I think in response to trustee Boyd's question, is, yes, you are in a contract right now with Cintas, and there was a misunderstanding in some of the consideration before these gentlemen engaged in the discussion with township. There was discussion about whether to discontinue that contract based upon the circumstances that had arisen and some of the other things, opportunities that might exist. So, what's being presented to you is an offer, basically, to resolve
Yep.
...the issues that existed that brought this before the board originally. So, if the board desires to proceed with Cintas, I think if, one of the options would be for the board to make a motion, somebody to make a motion to accept the offer for a $500 credit and continue with the contract with Cintas through its expiration date in February of 2016, period.
Yep.
Now, if that motion is made, I have a follow-up comment I'd like to make to the board as well.
Okay, and I just have a question. The contract as it sits now, it automatically renews if we don't...
There is language in there about notifying us. It would be pretty good to notify us.
Well, with that said, you know, 2016 is still a couple years away, and could we amend the contract somewhat to take that part out, that it doesn't automatically renew? I'd like to see you come back in here and say, "This is what the new contract is going to be."
That's as simple as a short note from somebody.
You can send a registered letter literally tomorrow.
Attorney Joppick.
Yes, that was what I was going to comment as a follow-up, if you made the motion that I...
Yeah, and I, and I believe, too, there was one discrepancy before where our service charge changed. We want to make sure that we're updated, and I think like clerk Keith is saying, that we're notified if there is going to be an extension of our contract. Are you thinking?
Yeah, it is automatic. You're not going to get notification from Cintas that it's being extended.
I, and I don't want to speak for the clerks. Is that what you're saying, Jody, that you would like notification, that...
I would like to have some kind of rider done at this point stating that the clause in the original contract...
Just on the letter.
And... Yeah, you just need to, like, I think what Rick's saying is, simple letters sent to our office would go in the file that you wish the contract not automatically renewed would be totally consistent.
It's always our, it's always our intention to renew early, so we might approach early and say, "Hey, we would like to renew this early," and make it best with space.
Just so we can check it, I believe we would, just make sure everything's in order, there's been no changes and things of that nature, and...
And the other thing to keep in mind from a budget standpoint, if you're running your business or your township, like you run, like around a household, you can always increase those during the winter, the mats where needed, and decrease during summer. We're very flexible that way, which is what a lot of, you know, our customers do, so...
My only other question is, do you do windows?
I'm not going to lie, I was, I was trying to figure out how else to get up there.
See us in March, John.
I know, saying three grand, I got that beat.
Any other questions, please, Joppick?
Now, is this the amount we pay every time the rugs are cleaned?
Fifty-two forty-six.
Fifty-two forty-six, and that's on a monthly basis right now.
The only change would be that...
It goes every four weeks, not once a month, because...
Every four, yeah.
So, you get about 15 services a year on a monthly service if it doesn't, every four
Being somewhat involved in the cleaning department and seeing what rugs cost to be cleaned, I was this round. I'll make the motion that we accept the...
I'd like to make the motion that we raise prices then.
Everything's going good, I'm...
Don't push me. I'll make the motion that we accept the settlement credit from Cintas for $500 and continue their... and continue their services with our contract ending, or continuing until February of 2016, at which time we would like to be notified that it's up for renewal.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion?
Actually, if I remember the way, I'm trying to remember how Steve said this. If we said right now, we don't, we're ending the contract in 2016 because it's automatically, if we don't, then it's automatically...
Only thing I would require...
I'm not saying that we're going to, but that way you would approach us.
We have customers that will send a letter that they have to be signed just to make sure that it automatically renew. So, just...
So, we can do that tomorrow.
Just mail a letter to the address, and you wish that the contract automatically renew.
That's what I thought. I was just trying to simplify.
We're actually, we're actually going to approach you probably a year early, so we'll probably approach you next year.
Okay.
If you want, I can add my department. Gentlemen, would you like to draft that?
And I'll acknowledge the receipt of the letter and the email to you guys so that you have the record on it.
Perfect.
I added a motion too, that we notify us when the contract is due, so that's...
Okay. Any other, any other questions, discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
I will write the credit tomorrow, have it signed. It should be applied to your next statement.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Richmond Lennox EMS ambulance purchase request. Mr. Boyd?
Just a bit of a clarification. I guess this isn't the purchase request for the vehicle. It's really a question of whether the township wishes to enter into a loan agreement with the ambulance authority for the purchase of the vehicle. From a history standpoint, we have, for the last couple of ambulances, come to the township to see if the township would like to, if you will, front the monies for the new ambulance. We have for years purchased these on loans from commercial banks and paid them the interest money over a period of about six years, the life of the vehicle, for the, for the ambulances. I think three ambulances ago, we came to the township and said, you know, we're, we recognize that on your investments, like many other communities, you're getting about a half percent of interest on the money that you have in the bank. And if you wanted to, in fact, front this money, we'd be happy to pay the interest back to the township. We have plenty of banks who are willing to do business with us. If the township, you know, decides that this isn't something that they want to continue on with, that's a policy they want to continue on with, but certainly want to welcome the township to, if you will, take back some of their own tax money, if you will, for these, for these vehicles. The, 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 agreed that this is in front of you was written by a previous legal counsel. I think your current legal counsel just received this tonight. So, my thought would be to move the process forward if it was acceptable to the board. The motion might be approved, subject to approval, you know, by your current legal counsel. Because like I say, I guess he just saw the copy of the document for the first time this evening. So, in fairness to him, let him read over what his predecessor had put together. If there's any changes, we can work those out, I'm sure. Basically, this, this agreement is for seventy-two payments. They'd be in the amount of $2,541.28. It would begin January 1st of 2015 and end on December 1st of 2020. The, the rest of it's pretty legalese, and the agreement is to keep insurance on the vehicle and other, other issues. I put in an amortization chart. So, the township could get a look at, at what this actually means to them in dollars and cents attached to your agreement. And basically, the total interest the township makes on this over the period alone is just shy of $15,000, $14,972.11, based on that. So, with that, I'd leave it up to the township as to how they would like to proceed.
I think this is a great way for us to utilize our, our reserve funds. And Karen, what do we get with our money in the bank right now?
We're getting probably less than a one percent.
So, we almost get three times the percentage rate, pay ourselves back. I think this is a great way to utilize our money.
Make a motion that we approve the primissary note with Richmond Lennox EMS in the amount of $168,000, contingent on Attorney Joppik looking over the, and I'm just making sure everything is in order.
I mean, Attorney Joppik and I had a moment to speak before the meeting, and I certainly, you know, welcomed him giving me a call. Should he have any particular questions, I shared with him. There's no private authorship of this vehicle, so if he, or this, this agreement, so if he needs something to change, that's fine. It was, like I say, it was written by prior legal counsel. And so, if there's, you know, some words or something that he feels should be changed, I certainly welcome that.
I wanted to add, utilizing PTA revenue fund. I'll support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Ann Barker. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. I'll just wait for Steve to give me the thumbs up, and I'll take care of that, gentlemen.
Very good.
Urban County, McComb, 2015, 2017, CDVG Fund Program Renewal. Deputy Venter Miggel.
This is standard. It happens every few years. And all county, each township and city has already approved this. And if we want to get CDVG funds, then you have to approve this. Easy as that.
Now, this says, needs to be backed by August 1st.
I contacted them last week, and yes, we have till tomorrow. So, I will, if it's approved tonight, I will scan this and send it to them in the morning. And the hard copy will be in the mail.
Make a motion to approve the Urban County of McComb renewal for the 2015 through 2017 program.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Property and Casual Insurance Renewal Proposal. This is for a carrier, Nicklin Saf Incorporated. Everybody has a summary on the first page. Annual renewal premium, $53,938, including carriers' coverage. Premium can be reduced by $799 if we refuse that coverage. An expiring annual premium was $49,489.
Just for the board's information, when we, this bill has already been paid. And we paid it with the $799 included in there for the terrorism coverage. We had got the bill from Nicklin Saf, and so this was actually paid on July 2nd. So, I think the major thing here is that we just need to, probably Ron needs to sign it, or you are...
The motion to approve it, what's...
This policy actually went into effect July 1st.
Right.
With our new fiscal year.
Should be a motion or also a...
I make a motion that we approve the renewal of the property and casualty insurance with Nicklin Saf through Pride Insurance.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Stuart Brevet and Whipple, 2013, 2014 Audit Contract. Any questions?
Is there an actual cost on this one? Is that what they're looking for, is...
Each four.
Oh, there it is. Nineteen thousand?
Yeah.
It actually does not exceed...
Correct.
With Katie on board, she takes over some of the auditing duties that Stuart Brevet and Whipple would do, because she has that expertise, because she was once an employee of Stuart Brevet and Whipple. So, she knows what they're looking for. So, she will be doing some of the stuff that is very time-consuming. She took care of that a couple, three years ago, and...
Streamlined it.
They were very happy and, I'm just took care of that. So, that should reduce, you know, their actual, what they would do.
Make a motion to approve the audit contract, 2013 through 2014, Stuart Brevet and Whipple. They vow not to exceed $19,000, including expenses and fees. Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Draft. Computer purchase. Clerk Keith.
During the midst of the conversion, last year, we had bought new computers in the last fiscal year. The old, the old computers were to come out and be put in non-essential spots to replace some that are over the dirt and need to be gotten rid of. We found out that they're Windows XP, so they're no longer supported, and they don't, or won't take the new computer, computer suite that we bought. So, we had already budgeted for purchases this year anyway. I'd like to move that up and do that now, and that has replaced six computers. The computers that are replaced will be, again, put into the non-essential. And that's people, you know, like Luann then comes in one day a week, and Chris Boyd's, and the code enforcement officer. The computers that are sitting on their desk now should have been gotten rid of on town. So, it's, it's a way to update theirs without giving them a brand-new computer. I did not identify the six, because I'm going to go through and figure that out at a later date.
And this is already budgeted for. What you're really looking for is just to move it into a little sooner.
Yeah. We budgeted for refresh in the 2014, 15, apparently. So, that's covered.
And the total amount is $5,124?
Yes. $5,124. There's actually a quote that was given later that had all six of them on it. You should have that in your packet.
$4,050.
I put it on with the other one.
Just one. Oh, right here. Six.
This one. $5,124.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of six computers in the amount of $5,124.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Okay. Now, with that, and it was alluded to on the front, on my memo, we are running out of our time because we have used it with this conversion. Now, a time block, I, I had him quote me a time block, and I gave you that quote, and it's really just for you to see it. My thought is to go ahead and continue utilizing our contract until we exhaust it. And then we would have to do a time block to finish out the contract. The quote is $95 per hour. Our contract is $85 per hour. And two or three times a year, they run specials on time blocks. So, I'd like to wait until they run one of those specials and then jump on it. So, I don't know if you would like to give me permission, when they run one of their sales, to go ahead and get a time block, knowing we're going to use it? Because I'm afraid if I don't have the approval upfront now, it'll be in between meetings.
And, you know, I, I don't want to give them a card block, like saying they got a lot of extra time, but we definitely need to get these problems resolved. So, we need to get whatever amount we need, and I agree with you, looking for the specials, we can save money on it, but we definitely need to kind of identify how much time we, we think we're going to need on this stuff and get it handled.
At this point, I don't know. We still have about eighty-three hours. They said we should be at about 103 in our contract. We're at 83, so we're about 25 short. But I knew that was going to happen. I built that into the contract upfront. There, like I said, there's, everything is being worked on. The, the issues that are going on with the conversion, nothing is being set to the wayside. It's all being worked on. I'm just not telling everybody this is what's happening. I'm not giving everybody a blow-by-blow. It's being worked on daily. So, I would just like approval to do a fifty, a fifty-hour time block when it goes on sale, not now.
If we purchase that, and the new contract comes up, and we haven't used them all, do they carry over at the end of the next contract?
Yeah. A time block is, is, it's just, it's there until it's gone. But like I said, I don't want to purchase it at this price.
If you get it cheaper.
I want to wait until they run one of their specials, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the clerk's office to buy a tech care time block when the price is cheaper and we know we're going to get a deal.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Ann Barker. Any other questions, Dushy? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Arcserve Computer Protection Renewal.
This is a renewal that really is essential. It's the backup system on the, on the server downstairs. Because of the price on it, it had to come to the board for approval, but it's, it's a mandatory essential service.
We have to have it.
Pardon me?
We have to have it.
We have to have it.
Okay, no sir.
Now, there is two different, there's a one-year renewal, and there's a three-year renewal. And the three-year is definitely the better bang for your buck. The only thing that was said was that new stuff comes out all the time, and if you didn't want to tie yourself down for three years, you know, there might be something better that comes out next year. Well, for the price difference in the two, I'd rather go ahead with the three-year.
What's your recommendation?
Yeah, and get the bigger, better bang for the buck, so.
Yeah, you're buying two additional years for $500.
Right.
Basically, yeah. And it's $1,198 for one year, so.
Any motion?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the clerk to enter into the Arcserve Computer Protection Renewal plan for, with a three-year renewal cost of six, of...
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any other questions?
Jody, did I get the right amount to pull the right amount? For the three-year contract? Three years?
Or is it, no, it should be the $1,198.
No, that's, that's, that's the one-year.
Yeah, so she got it right. $1,698.
What?
$1,698 for three years.
Yeah, she had the right amount.
She had it right.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries.
The only thing I'd like to add on all of this high-tech... The only thing I'd like to add on all of this, High Tech, our computer tech of numerous years, he has left the company, and so I want to wish him luck. And that would, that would be John Julio Dickinson.
Thank you. Community room carpet cleaning. Can I?
After finding out a few minutes ago that Cintas does carpet cleaning, I talked to them in the hallway, and the person who does that is going to contact me because of this carpeting is the recycled materials and carpet squares. You all have received my note regarding the other company that came out here, and then the company that I had come out here, and the quote that they gave.
And once again, we're going to have a lot of work done. I'm wondering maybe if we could have the DPW superintendent maybe give us a punch list on this room? We're going to have stuff done that we might want to accomplish all at the same time. Cam, I don't know when you can fit that in your schedule, but that would be one of the recommendations I would make too, like, let's see what we're going to eventually have to do in here. If we're dealing with windows, carpet, painting, everything, it might be something we want to coordinate altogether.
Right. Well, in the hallway, I, Cintas told me about, they do tile cleaning, they do Carhartt cleaning, even if they're ours. So I'm going to get together with them and see exactly what services they provide and
Yeah, logistically, so we're not jumping around and
Right.
causing a mess, and then re-cleaning and other things of that nature. That's the reason I bring that up.
So I don't know if you want me to withdraw this, or if you want to just make a motion to table it, whatever.
When's the last time it was cleaned? Last year, two years?
Carpeting's never been cleaned.
It's never been cleaned.
The tile in the main hallway has been, I think twice, but not, not the carpeting.
Okay, so I make a motion that we remove this from the agenda, waiting for more information from Cintas.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Employee time clock purchase. This was brought to my attention due to issues we were having with the time clock. I, at that time, issued that just to get some idea on some different alternatives to fix the problem.
I gave you a variety of different types of mechanical ones. There's also one that has face recognition in the Staples catalog. It didn't have any for thumbprint or handprint ones. I was just made aware of a kind that you can put your whole hand in, but it's not touching anything, so it's just kind of hovering, and it does a scan of your hand. So you can't pick up anybody else's germs by touching it or doing a thumbprint. So I would like to find out about that one, but.
We just want something I, that I would say is consistent, easy to read, correct?
Absolutely. The time cards that we're having, I don't know how you both can read and decipher them.
I have absolutely no problem whatsoever. I'm serious.
Really?
I have no problem whatsoever.
Oh, well, everybody, well, I have, most of the people that I've been talking to, the employees, they're all struggling with that clock.
I asked Karen after I, after I received this, and I said, are you having a problem? Because I thought, I know I'm not, and I'm doing the payroll, so.
Alignment problems, correct, and?
But the thing is, and my question right off the top of my head, thinking about this tonight, those of you that are saying there's an issue there, are you saying that you don't think we're reading them properly, and that you're not being paid properly?
No, no, not saying that at all.
Because it should have been brought to us to say, you know, hey, you know, are we doing something wrong, or whatever, so.
I believe it was an alignment issue.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's never in the, in the frame that you would, it's always up, down, or on the line, or on the other time above it, or below it, or on top of it.
Well, there's three of us that do payroll, and I don't see a reason to make a purchase like this if there's not another issue there. And that was what my concern was, if somebody got a problem, then they're thinking we're, they're getting gypped because we can't see.
That's, that had never been brought up.
No, that has never been.
I, you know, I don't have a problem with it, and
If you'd like, if you'd like to do a, if you'd like to do a quick survey of anybody, if anybody's seeing problems or they like it the way it is, and report that to the treasurer and the clerk. Does that sound fair enough?
Well, it doesn't, here's the thing. If we can read it, and we, they don't think we're shorting them, then what is the issue other than the alignment? Yes, sometimes they're right on top of each other, but most of the time, they're, they're there. They might be sponged a little close, but they're there, and you can, and I can read them.
And I was wondering too, we looked today, she was showing me today, is there a different size of time cards that when we get another batch of time cards, that it could be, you know, different?
I don't know. Now, we pulled out, there was an old one that was stuck underneath, thinking that one came from, but that one doesn't even, it, it doesn't work. But we also, I put a new anchor in that, and thinking, you know, maybe it would work if it just had an anchor. And there was, what, three left? Three brand-new anchors left? So there's some supplies left on this one too. Tomorrow, I'll put the new anchor that I put the old machine in it.
So the bottom line is, you do that, do the time cards, look at them, and figure out the time, you have no problem with it?
If I was having a hard time and really could not discern what the, what the time was, I'd be the first one complaining and saying, you know, we need to replace this. Yeah, the thing's old, but it still works for the time being, and, you know, two days from now, it might go, and then we'd have to do something different. But right now, it's still working, and
I think what she was going off, I know you were having difficulty, and I think you said somebody else was having difficulty, that said things, that's why she brought this to you, Tom.
Yes. That's correct.
Cam, you have the same time clock down there, don't you?
Yes, I do.
Do you guys have an issue down there?
Every so often, and it usually depends on the lot of cards. Sometimes they're just cut differently.
Right.
Recently, the biggest problem we have is some of them are cut too wide, so I have to trim them with scissors so they slide up and down easier.
That's, that's my thought, yeah.
And, you know, every once in a while, you know, yeah, I have to adjust the height of the slide so it falls between the lines, and, you know, about every other year, I have to replace the encutters. And then, of course, it's not the easiest thing to adjust the time. You know, it's actually pretty complicated, but that's the only real complaint I have a lot of.
We don't usually have a problem with, you know, the ones from you guys down there.
No, I will say this, the dial on your guys is a lot harder to read, and I think it's because it sits in the window and gets all that sun out of it.
Oh. Here it was.
The dial on the side that adjusts for the day a week, I think because it sits there in the window, the sun has faded that decal, and it's kind of hard to read.
Now, maybe we can take the one off the one that's the extra one and just switch it. Well, if it's just a screw, that's very possible.
I'll look at that tomorrow.
Now, there is a program, and I mentioned it to you earlier, where my son works, where they just punch in on a computer. They just click in and click out, so that might be something worth looking into.
Is there a program that we have with our swipe cards, maybe? Can we swipe in when we're coming in the building? Is there any way, some kind of program for that already?
No, because if you come in behind somebody, it's not registering. If, if, you know, somebody holds the door for you, it's not registering, and it's not made for time.
Okay.
You know?
There's ways to get around someone who are holding the door open for you. Everybody would have to swipe it in.
Yeah. Right, but then, let's say you go outside for something, does that mean you're clocking out?
If you were to do that, I would suggest putting up a separate thing just for clocking in and out.
Yeah, it's like, you know, when, when this, when this clock croaks out, and we have to do some replacement, then we'll look at what the technology is at that time.
Absolutely.
And we could, even if we can get, if we have one computer that works really well, we could set it up right there if we wanted to, in the building department where everybody comes in. Everybody clicks in right there and have one computer, the computer program one I was talking about.
Yeah, let's talk about that, you know, and, yeah, talk later about. Show it to me.
I'd like to make a motion that at this time, we decline a purchase of an employee time clock.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Clerk Keith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Use of former Township Hall.
Last week, I sent, a week and a half, I sent an email to everybody. And I just, you know, it was a thought that popped into my head with all the additions and building on the park that we're doing right now. Looking at putting in a splash pad and redoing the path and concession stand. It seems like the perfect time to look at turning the old Township Hall into a community center of some sort. Could be utilized for seniors, could be utilized for teen activities, family activities. I had, I asked our senior coordinator what she thought about it. She actually likes the idea, she likes the idea of having more room for the seniors, Luann did. She actually put a letter together for you guys also. It just seems to make a lot of sense right now. One of the things I'm hoping for is that if we have a little bit of extra money in the grant, if that does come through, we could use that to do some modernization, some work in there. I've walked through the building a couple times over the last month, just looking around, and it really doesn't look like it would take much. We could use it almost as it is, and be easy to put a full-size kitchen in there. And we could actually potentially generate revenue by renting it out to residents for baby showers, family reunions, whatever, winter events, that they can use the pavilions outside. So there's a lot of potential there, so. Basically, tonight, I just wanted to throw that idea out there and get everybody thinking about it. I just think it'd be a really good idea, a good use for that building. It's been sitting empty for a long time, and the longer it sits, the more potential we have for not being able to do anything with it. So just wanted to throw that out there and let everybody start thinking about it. Really, there's not a lot we could do it till we find out if we get the grant, and hopefully that'll be soon, and then move on from there.
And my only question with the grant is whether or not we could add this to that if we have money left over.
I called her today, and she wasn't 100% sure. If it was something, if it was like to expand the splash pad, if we found that we had more money, she knows for a fact we can do that. She's not 100% sure because that wasn't in it that we can, she'd have to look into it, and she is going to look into it for me.
There's a lot of variables in, in Chris's proposal. I agree that that building, I hate to see it go to waste. I don't want to see it torn down. I want to see it utilized. This mirrors a lot of what the City of Richmond has done with their community center. Do you have someone up there that you could talk to about some of the ins and outs?
Well, I could call, I know Marvel up there, just by name, I don't really know her no more, but yeah, I could call her and talk to her and see what's up.
Carol will give you the name and phone number of someone you can talk to, and that would give us a little bit more information on that part of it, because we've always been very adamant about not renting that building out and taking on the liability. But again, I'd like to see that building utilized instead of just let go to waste, so.
We, we have had that discussion before about renting the building out on groups, what, what groups could come and ask to rent that out? That was an issue that we discussed many times before.
Yeah, there's a lot of variables, because then who do you give a key to, and who do you open? Who opens it, who's liable for it? And then if we do put a full kitchen in there, once again, these two are insurance coverage because of fire and
A lot of, a lot of things.
There's a lot of variables. I mean, it's a, it's a great idea, but I know we've, we were kind of hashing a lot of those out.
That's why I'd like to see how the City of Richmond handles it, if they have a full-time employee that takes care of that, because, you know, you know, we can't do that, but
Well, no, we've, we've used that facility with them many times, and they give me a key. And we have a key that morning, that's how they do it.
Yeah.
And then we're responsible, we leave, we pay a deposit, and then when they come in, I check it, and everything's good, we get our deposit back, minus the fee for using it.
I think that's the way Richmond Township did too, didn't they? When the old
Yeah, they, you know, Richmond Township's a little different situation, but they basically got out of business because it did take a fair amount of administrative time to, to, to do that, and they were hooping and finding rounds to have somebody have to deal with.
One of our biggest problems was
Shaget who cleans it, who does this, and They're a smaller community.
It's just a smaller part of it. I mean, we don't have to go that route, but I think an activity center, community center, I mean, there's just, there's still a lot of potential, even just that route.
And if we get this, if we get this splash pad and everything going out in the park, we may find that this place is packed all the time in the summer. Not in the winter, but in the summer. So I, I don't want to discount anything, and I want that building used for something.
Yes. Okay.
Like you said, he didn't want a motion on anything, he just wanted to throw it out.
Yes, yep, yep.
Okay. Also, another one? Public comment? Anybody like public comment? Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 9:00 PM.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Clerk Keith. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Thank you.